Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, welcome. Dawson County Board of Commissioners Work Session, today's Thursday, July the 7th, 2022. Appreciate all of you that are with us here in person, as well as those that are with us online. We do, we will start out with a public hearing. Twenty twenty-two millage rate and property tax, this is the first of three hearings. The second hearing will be held at four P M. July twenty-first, twenty twenty-two, and the third hearing will be held at six P M, August the fourth, two thousand twenty-two. And I'll make this presentation to the board before we actually have the, open up the hearing for the citizens to tell us their thoughts. This is the presentation, proposed millage rate for the twenty twenty-two tax year. Little bit of history on the millage rate. Property taxes provide funding for county, provided services to include pub- public safety, public works, public health, parks and recreation and judicial. This tax revenue is accounted for in the general fund that for the day-to-day operations. We're looking at providing a fifty percent rollback to the property owners for the twenty twenty-two tax levy. And this will be the fourth straight year that the board has lowered the millage rate from the prior year. Where does your property tax dollar go? Board of Education, their millage rate is fourteen point two. And if the board adopts this after the hearings, our new, our new millage rate would be seven point two-two-two-five for a total millage rate of twenty-two point six-two-five, which shows you that about two-thirds of your property tax goes to the school. They'll adopt, Board, Board of Education, they'll adopt their millage rate in August, and this is a tentative rate, and it could change. Little bit of an impact on what you're looking at when it comes to the millage rate on a three-hundred-thousand-dollar home. Taxed at a forty percent value, which would be a hundred and twenty thousand. You see the school's millage rate, the county's millage rate for the total. And then you see, and this is, could vary a little bit depending on what kind of exemptions that people have. Some people have a school tax exemption due to their age, and they don't pay school tax. They have homestead exemptions, which also lowers their taxable value as well. But this is military, disability, so there are several different types of exemptions that are out there. You see what, this is basically with no exemptions. The school would get seventeen oh-four, county eight, sixty-six seventy, and the total tax bill would be twenty-five-hundred-and-seventy dollars and seventy cents. So what I'm proposing to the Board of Commissioners is that we roll the millage rate back to seven point two-two-two-five, down from the twenty-twenty-one rate of seven point six-two-five. This millage rate will provide a tax levy of approximately fourteen thousand six-hundred-and-ninety-five dollars. Six-hundred-and-ninety-five thousand seven-hundred-and-eight dollars. This is approximately about, what, thirty-five to forty percent of what our general fund revenue is, is provided by property tax. The others provided through sales tax and other fees and charges that are out there. So that's the recommendation that I'm making to you today is that we roll the millage rate back to seven point two-two-two-five, down from the current seven point six-two-five, which continues the trend that we roll the millage rate back for the past. This will be the fourth year in a row. And we're able to do that due to the fact we've seen increases in sales tax, which has helped us be able to balance our budget every year, which we're required to do by law. We have several, we have, and the reason we're looking at maybe just a fifty percent rollback is we have several very big projects that we're taking on that have to be done. The board's familiar with it, and we'll talk a little bit more about it tonight. The new nine-one-one radio system for our public safety agencies is a very expensive thing that we're going to have to do. We can no longer have our personnel out there with the inability to communicate. And we're looking at somewhere between probably the proposal, and we haven't got the real number yet, ten to thirteen million dollars to fix that. And I will tell you that something other that, and Tim can relate to this as well, something we've been looking at for years. When I was in charge of emergency services, we had proposed a three-step proposal to fix this problem in two thousand fifteen. We fixed one out of the three, is always, they were able to do at that time. So we are here today with something other that has rolled over year after year after year. And this board has took a very serious look at it. It's, it is time now to make sure that the people we have out there that are protecting us are also protected and can communicate to the citizens. So that's one thing that we have to look at. Some of the other things that we will be looking at is obviously our staffing levels as we continue to try to provide the best quality service that we can for the money that we have. And so we'll continue to do that as well. But if the board has any questions, I'll try to answer them in reference to what I'm proposing to you tonight before I open up the hearing. I did try to send y'all out some information in reference to what some of the most expensive things that we're looking at.
Yeah.
And so hopefully y'all had an opportunity to look at all that.
Got some federal money that's going to be expiring.
Yep.
And we, grants that need, and we will need to keep going with them, so.
Yep.
That's, that's a big ticket item, so.
All right, no questions. So at this time, I will open up a public hearing on the twenty twenty-two millage rate and property tax. Anyone here to speak on the twenty twenty-two millage rate and property tax? Anyone? All right, seeing none, I'll close that here. Second hearing will be held on, at four o'clock, July twenty-first, two thousand twenty-two. We'll move on to unfinished business. First up, we have presentation of artificial turf fields for park and recreation. Park and Recreation Director Matt Payne and Purchasing Manager Melissa Hawke. This was last discussed at the March third, two thousand twenty-two voting session. Matt.
Great appreciation that you allow me to come speak to you on behalf of great, great. As you will remember, we have some projects that are coming on.
There we go. As you will remember, we do have a couple of projects that will be coming down the line that we have previously discussed. And as we're moving forward now, we're ready to go to bid on. Number one is the ADA field. We've done our scopes, we've done our specs, and we're ready to put that forward. That is the rubber field that will be serving our friends in the special needs community. So that one is ready to go to bid. The other projects now, we're excited to move forward with the artificial turf projects at Veterans Park. Now that Veterans Park, we will be doing the football field as well as the multipurpose field. And really excited about that. That's going to be obviously the home to our, it is the home to our football program, also the home to our upcoming lacrosse program that we are kicking off and growing very fastly, very swiftly, I should say. So with that, I'm working with Ms. Nykirk, Ms. Hawk, through our wonderful finance department. It has been determined that these are impact fee eligible. We decided to go ahead and go with impact fees as that mean, that can get this done quicker. We can get this project started a whole lot faster and get this moving, leaving that balance then in sploshed to do land acquisition or whatever we may need to do in the years to come, because we are growing extremely fast. And we're going to have to use that money then. So it's better to use our impact fees for this money right now, and they are both eligible to do that. We have set a limit at two-point-five million for all three of these projects. And I'm asking for your approval to move forward with this bid process.
Questions for Matt?
I guess Impact Fee Fund has two-point-five allocated already for that.
Yes, sir.
What is the total balance in that? It's a total balance allocated to park and rec at this time and impact fees.
I couldn't, I, I can't remember what it was, but it was. And it comes in quite well.
Other questions for Matt?
Yeah, we're, we're excited about getting this next wave of projects moving. And to that end, I would like to request that we move this to the voting session tonight, just in an effort of speeding this process along. So with your approval, I would like to have this moved to the voting session this evening.
You'll be good with that?
Yes, I am.
Okay, everybody good? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Also under unfinished business, presentation of proposed transfer station improvements. County Manager David Hedley and Public Works Director Jeff Hahn, last discussed at the March seventeenth, two thousand twenty-two voting session.
Dave. All right, thank you, Chairman. Good afternoon, Commissioners. Yes, on, on March the seventeenth, twenty-two, staff brought to the B O C attention safety concerns regarding the transfer station and how it has been functioning. Just a little bit over the years, the transfer station has transitioned from accepting only household items to installing weight scales for accepting all commercial debris. The action over time has caused significant damage to the facility, causing safety concerns that require immediate action. Per that discussion, staff was directed by the B O C to look at alternative methods to improve the operation as it relates to commercial, residential recyclables, recyclable materials. So on May the thirty-first, a second field review of Pickens County Recycle Center, along with the main recycling processing center was conducted. The information obtained from Pickens County has provided staff with possible options to improving Dawson County's operation. So I've got a little PowerPoint want to direct your attention to. So the, this is a picture of the Pickens, well, let me go to the next slide there. So pulling in, so a pull-in and drop-off system is, is a secondary system that they have, which is stationed outside of the Big Canoe area. Customers separate their recyclables, household trash and drop into the correct recyclable bins. All receptacles are clearly marked, thus providing education in what is accepted per the receptacle. Right now, we are limited as to what we take and, and, and what can go in there. This would provide a much broader recyclable operation than what we currently have in place. So the receptacles and containers, these are the compacters, the receptacles. There's two types that you have, one that the binds, and then the other is transported, you know, through the containers. And this is a different, kind of a different look than what we see right now, we have out there where we just have the single stream, and it's put into a, you know, that and wrapped and gone. This is actually distributed in which it helps the citizens to, to see where their actual recyclables are going to and what's being placed in there, rather it's not being combined with other items and, and also cuts down on, on the contamination side of things. So it does provide a level of operation that they enjoy as well, that we found in, in, in interviewing some of the staff members out there at Pickens and also on their satellite office. So the, the phase one retrofit site, this is what we're proposing, which I'll go into in a little more detail in a moment. But to the next slide is, is what you see right here is an overview. Existing right now, we have a series of bins that used to be used to throw trash and stuff into, which has since changed to where it handles basically material for the road department, salts, different rock, you know, that type of thing. And so what we're proposing there is that these, these wing walls, these concrete wing walls that you see on there, that they be extended, that the roof be extended, and that a similar type of setup would, would be in play similar to the one at, at the Big Canoe. As you see in the next slide there, the purple area that you see, there would be the extension of that facility. And then the pink area, the reddish area, I should say, is an area that we would need to excavate out. There's a ditch that exists in there now, that ditch would be filled and piped. And then that would provide a turnaround area for the trucks to move in and bring out the compactors and, and, you know, load and unload, that type of thing. It would all be covered over so that the vehicles would be covered in, in, in climate, in climate weather. So it would be again, set up similar to what we see now in, in the Big Canoe area. So, so the approximate areas of the site expansion preliminary scope is to utility, utility locates and relocate in-house sourced. Engineering design, we would outsource that. I've already spoken to a couple of folks on that as to what kind of modifications we can do to the existing building. We have the site work, which we, I believe we can handle in, in-house. Construct, construction would be outsourced, and then a rough, rough cost estimate to this would be about two-hundred thousand dollars. And that's again, an, an estimate, depending on if and when we do this, what those costs would be when we actually go out to the open market. On the next slide is the existing transfer station. So we're looking at really two different phases to this operation here. Under the existing, to be utilized for non-commercial large household waste such as mattresses, furniture, until such time it is decided to retrofit for the commercial activity. We still have the scales in place, so those scales would determine the weight loads for the residential, you know, or, you know, operation. For example, if you were renovating a home and you had material that needed to be discarded, we still have that operation going on. What it does do is it eliminates bringing in the large commercial traffic areas until such time we decide what we're going to do with the, with the building. There will be some retro fitting of some beams and things that are overstressed now that I think you heard about before and were showed during their PowerPoint. That's estimated about thirty-five thousand dollars to have that replaced, some modifications done to the floor that would allow for some heavier, thicker steel to be used to ramp down so that when the material hits that, it slides off into the, the trailers themselves. But this would be strictly for the residential. It won't be, you know, outsourced to, for allowed for the commercial operations at this time, until such time that the, the building be renovated, should you decide to go in that direction. The next is, what do we do about all this traffic, you know, coming and going and, and, and everything? What you'll see here is a series of colors that actually dictate the, the flow of traffic, which Commissioner Gaines and I were talking the other day, had a great idea about bringing that traffic down along the other, the side where the existing transfer station is now, is bringing it, as you're looking at it to the left side, bringing it around and tying into the yellow balloon, if you will, there, and then bringing it around to the blue cul-de-sac area and then out. So this is just a kind of an example to give you an idea of what we're looking at and getting the flow of traffic going. And the reason for bringing them down along the side was the fact that we do have a stationary attendance office there, which collects the money and all. So this way, that would eliminate having to create another area there for an attendant to sit on that side. We consolidate to do the, the two of them. So there are still some minor details to work out as far as that goes there. So Green Waves Recycling Proposal, I've asked Taylor Burgess with the Waste Eliminators to come tonight. We've had several meetings with, with him and their company regarding, you know, what they see and, and what recommendations they may have as far as what we need to do to maybe get this recycling up and get it compatible in comparison to the other ones that we've looked down and get a, a really full-fledged operation going. And their recommendation that you would see on here is, I don't want to go through each one of these, but it's a series of different containers and compactors and all that we would be looking to install down in that, that area there. So what we, the benefits and goals is, is that to, to offset the cost to a zero out or better. So the more product that we eliminate, and I can have Taylor come up and explain how that, that works, but the more product that we get in and the more that goes out, would, would actually be going, they would be transferring it to Pickens County. The more that we get out, the cost comes down on our rentals. So what we hope to do is by educating the public, getting a really good program going, is that we can end up getting a zero cost on our rentals, costing us in our operation other than, you know, some of the other things that we have to do there to almost a zero cost, at least in that area. So that will reduce, it'll also reduce the overhead and equipment, fuel, maintenance of the operation itself until we decide again the direction that the board wishes to go. It would encourage and educate Dawson County, the community and the residents to recycle and cut the waste to landfill. So again, it's, it's really a full-fledged recycling operation and transport to an area that handles that. And of course, once it gets to Pickens County, they bind it, and then it goes out on the open market, and, and that's what Pickens County does. So they, they've got other agreements with other counties. Taylor can speak to that, should you have any questions, and go from there. So what we're looking at is, it's recommended that this project be split into two phases. Phase one would, would be for the recyclables, household waste, and phase two for commercial waste. Phase one would be to create a budget, and that budget would be in the neighborhood of about two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars, which would handle the renovation to the existing area that I showed you with the concrete wing walls, some of that, because there's been salt under there, some of the steel pilings may have to be replaced, the extension of that, the overhang extension, and in the modification to the site work that would need to be done down there in order to get, you know, in and out of that area. So it would also cover the repairs that need to be done inside the existing transfer station where the I-beams are twisted and bent, and would also help to, would also pay that in that thirty-five thousand I mentioned earlier, you know, as far as rebuilding the floor area where we dump at, that type of thing. So that would cover both getting the operation just up to where, kind of where we are, you know, or where we were years ago before we started the commercial part of everything. So we're going to contract engineering design and retrofit construction. And then this would accommodate separate recyclable containers, household waste and containers and compactors, and similar to the Pickens County recycling. They'll also contract out the containers and the compactors and the hauling services. Phase two would be the funding through Splosh Eight. Now I know everybody's going, oh my gosh, it's, you know, seven, eight years down the road, you know, right now, unless the board is, you know, in a position to want to bond it or go out, you know, take it out of, you know, fund balance or doing something along those lines. This was a way to be able to get this system up and running and then make the decisions as to what we're going to, you know, what we want to do down the road. And of course, at any time, we can decide to go ahead and fund that, once we see what's going on in the economy and those kind of things. So I felt it was just a, a good way to, to look at that as a capital investment down the road and then open it back up. This way, we don't have to dismantle scales, we don't have to, to do those things. So phase two would be to recommend that it come out a, a proceed, proceed with the contracting, out the engineering design and retrofit construction of the existing transfer station to accommodate the commercial materials. And then staff respectfully request for the board's approval to move forward with phase one at this time. So the initial outlay would be then, you know, estimated at the two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars. So I'll be happy to answer any questions I can, and Taylor's here to answer maybe some of those questions you may have about the product distribution.
Questions for Dave?
Dave, would there be any kind of little building, you know, like, like over at Big Canoe? You know, and they've got a building there where the workers are, and they'll come out and help us that don't know what we're doing to sort all that. Would we have anything like that?
Well, that's a part of it, and as I mentioned earlier, Commissioner Gaines and I had a conversation about it, and, and his point was well-taken that by doing that, we would have to, you know, have somebody, we'd have to have really two places. One over there taking money, and then one over on this side taking money, where you're bringing in metals and, and commercial, commercial being residential, I should, residential debris. So that was a way of being able to combine it and using one building. I'm sure we could set up a, you know, a, a similar, you know.
Until people are educated, I mean, you know, because they'll, I'll start to throw something, no, you can't do that, that's brown plastic.
Right.
That's not clear plastic, you, you put the other over. So somebody, because then you'll spoil the whole thing, and you won't even be doing any recycling.
It's a great point, and you remember, one of the impressive things about being out at the picking, Pickens area and the Big Canoe area was the fact of the, the labeling that they had put up. They had the big banners, and it said type A, and this is what type A is. And the next bin was type B, and this is what type B is.
Number one, number twos, and cardboard in cereal boxes.
Yes, ma'am.
But, but still, when you first go, I'm speaking for myself, because I take mine over there. You, you really got to have somebody, because I mean, it's kind of overwhelming.
Sure.
And I, I just wonder if we'd have anybody there to show somebody, because I don't want to spoil a bin of something by throwing the wrong thing in there.
Yes, ma'am.
So they'd really be an educational component to this. Oh, and I'm, I'm speaking for myself, but, but I mean, I really like, and then when I get the hang of it, I'll be able to go through there, zip, zip, zip like other people, but they say me coming, and they both bail out of that building. So.
That's not because of recycling. That's not the recycling, Chair.
It's me, it's me, I know. But you do have, I mean, you have to have somebody to really educate you, because there's a lot of bins over there, you know.
Well, I think that, that comes along with everything that we're trying to do and accomplish is to include that component that wasn't there before. And I think if we get this set up the way it's intended to be, it'd be, it'd work well and be an educational lesson. I don't know, and I mean, you know, let's face it, we've already heard, you know, some inconveniences to folks. And, but as they, they learn more about it and everything from what we gathered, and I know you were there and the, and the chairman and all, and, and talking with them, after a while, it becomes a pretty, I won't say exciting thing, but it, it was definitely, they enjoyed going to the recycling center.
It was just a smooth silk when we were watching.
Yes, ma'am.
You know, because evidently they were more educated than I was about it, so.
Yes, ma'am.
But I, when we first stopped this recycling, I really got a lot of complaints. I think people want to recycle.
I talked to somebody just last week about it, and I said, well, you're lucky, we're talking about it at our next meeting coming up. I mean, people want to be able to do that, and I think they should have the opportunity to be able to.
Well, and, and to that point, it, it's kind of because, you know, glass wasn't being taken. There are certain materials that weren't being taken, and so it became more of an inconvenience, really from the household level, you know, to trying to say, well, what, what do I take, what don't I take, what can I take? And then you come down and it all goes into one, and, and this way you know where it's going, and you know it's being collected. And then you come down and it all goes into one and, and this way you know where it's going and you know it's being collected and, and being dis- distributed, you know.
You can really see it. It's so plain with those bins. It's just real plain. So.
I think the way that recycling is handled now and the cost that's associated with it, the only way to make it work for a county without investing, just supplementing the whole program tremendously is to partner with somebody that's dealing in volume and that has those distribution channels already established. And so I mean, I commend you guys for looking at that as an option and trying to partner with the neighboring community that, that's doing that. Because I think that gives us survival. Saying that ultimately, if we can get to where our volume increases enough that it does offset, you know, the, the costs that we're looking at initially. And I think that circles back around to my question, you and I kind of talked about the other day is, at what point and how do we measure volume to get to either price reduction or a break even point? And that might be.
Yeah. Let me land a question, Taylor, try to talk to that. And, and I will say just to, if I, if I may, before he speaks, is that I believe in, Chairman, correct me if I'm wrong, but somewhere in the neighborhood of eight to $10 million that Pickens did, they used to, and bonded to, to do their project. And right now they're able to take the product that they're getting and everything, and they sell it out on the open market. And they're able to bring that money in that is used to pay off that debt. So if we get to that point, get this up and running and get to that point where we are seeing the volumes and we are getting that return back, it may be at that time, less than the, than the eight years SPOSS eight time that we are able to go ahead and do it and use that revenue to offset that bond cost. So that's something to consider at that point. This is Tyler, Taylor Burgess.
I guess they call you short.
I appreciate you guys having me here. So this is the first time I've ever spoken in front of a bunch of commissioners. So you don't have to bear with me.
You're fine.
But with the.
You know more than we know. You know more than I know.
So when it, you know, when it comes to the recycling and everything, it's something that in the next few years, more people's going to be moving, moving towards it. And really we need to. So the idea is to get it going and not really look at next year. Hey, we're going to bet next year. We, we want to see where we will be in like five years. Cause it'll take a little bit of time to get it going. You know, Pickens County, that didn't happen in a year. You know, that's, that's 10 years of them working hard at it. So really for your question, it, it could be six months. It can be five years. There's really no data for us to go on, but really what it would take is the community involvement. You know, the rec department, they could set up recycling cans at their sites. So whenever you go to a football game, whatever, you can recycle your plastics, your aluminum, whatever you have going there. And then same thing with the schools, you know, anything that the county is involved with, you know, encouraging everyone to, to recycle. You know, it's going to cut the cost for the MSW because the recycling, I'm going to essentially haul it, haul it for nothing. So it's not going to cost you anything for me to, to take it. But the, the goal is, is within the first year to see that reduction coming in. But after the first six months, you know, we're going to take a good look at it. After six months, we might then, you know, have money coming back to the county.
So it, it goes beyond, you alluded to, but I think that in the presentation, it talks about getting to a net zero. We're not costing anything, but you're saying that eventually it could be a cash flow generator.
Yes. So eventually what I would like for it to be is something that can even pay for the MSW hauling and everything as well. So then, you know, you can possibly even, your bag trash and everything is already really cheap. So it's hard to go lower than that, but it could be something that is, is free to the residents. You know, it's something that, and if there isn't a, a net coming in, then maybe it can be put towards a project that's going on. So.
And so bag trash is part of the same program. You are taking our bag trash.
Um, well, I think with the recycling, the recycling is what we're going for first.
Sure.
Cause the MSW will be a different bid, I'm assuming. Municipal solid waste, so household trash. But yes.
We're not going to charge for recycling, are we?
No.
I'm just talking about on the, on the taking away program. So keep going. You, you, you're, obviously the money is in the recyclables, but what are we doing with household?
So with that, I send the numbers on that too. So my proposal was $80 a ton with a 295 full rate. But I was looking at the compactors. So at the recycling center, those compactors. So my company would have purchased 400 North and we can transfer MSW there. So instead of having to basically pay for it from here, I can get it over there a lot cheaper and then haul it in bulk cheaper too.
Good. So, but. So if you hauled it, I mean, we're hauling it right now to Eagle, Eagle Point and we get the hosting fee back on that. So you would just haul it and then you would collect hosting. Well, you don't get it.
No, I, we would keep it the same way. That way that you can still get your hosting fee. So we already haul there. So we can keep it the same thing. Who was it I spoke with on that? The lady? Yeah. So she explained all that and that's something that I spoke with my owner and he said that we can continue to make sure that you guys are getting that back.
So you're, just for clarification, this is a little different than what I was thinking you and I were talking about. You are going to pick up the recyclables and take them to Pickens County.
Yes.
And then based on the tonnage amount that we generate, we're paying a flat fee in the proposal now. And then at some point we renegotiate that essentially based on the volume of recyclables.
Yes.
And then on our MSW, whatever you call it, we are going to pay you $80 a ton. And then we're paying you $295 to take it.
Yes.
And then we get the host fee back. Versus now, we're just taking it. Bearing the expense and I, y'all run the numbers and it makes sense to.
Well, that's what I, that's what I don't understand is I don't know why we're doing the MSW, because we're paying like $23 a ton or something for a disposal fee now and it's trucking it ourselves. So I don't know. That's what I was going to ask, why that was included with this proposal was the, what would we be using the two compactors for the MSW for?
So the idea is to, in the little convenience center that, that the residents will pull through, we want it to be ideal for them to be able to throw their household trash away and also put their recycling in there as well. Cause if we have the household trash on the other side of the facility, are you going to go to two places to take your recycling and then go to your household trash? And there are some people that will absolutely, but then some people just going to be like, I'm just going to throw it away. So it's trying to encourage everyone that you're already going to be there, you know, keep your plastics separated, throw it into the bin. It is really the, how we're looking at it.
Okay. Cause it's just, it's cost us several times more. If they put it in y'all's container versus dumping it in their transfer station, it would cost us several times more to dispose of it there. So that's why I was kind of confused. It's why we were offering that makes sense, but it's still a large cost to us to do.
And of course, that's something that we can look at as well.
Yeah.
So I mean, those prices aren't set in stone with that MSW.
Yeah.
So.
It don't make you think it's a MSW other than a little bit from all, I mean, you've got to make something from all in.
Yeah, it's, it can be tight at times, especially with fuel being $6 a gallon. So.
But you would carve that out. Let's just say that we opted to haul, we got the compactors. Y'all are mainly focused on the recycling. That sounds like what you want is the recyclables.
That's what, uh, so there's several different counties that I'm working with on the recycling. If I get the MS, the household trash and MSW, that's great too. But I, I see that I can help the counties more with the recycling rather than the MSW. So. Cause I'm, I'm basically going to be the outlet to where after you recycle, we can truly recycle it and I can get money back to you guys. So, because if, if you haul it just straight over to Pickens County, he can't really pay you guys for it. So.
Other question?
I do have a question for Dave. You're talking about doing the transfer station, fixing some stuff in the floor in there. Would that be where we could dump on the floor and it would go into the trailers or is that what you're talking about? You know, you said something about putting some heavy steel down or what, what, can you explain that a little bit more?
You may recall through the other presentation that Denise did, E P D, we have no floor drain in there.
Yeah.
So put it on the floor. We're not technically supposed to be.
That would be where they could.
So it would be.
Shoot it over into the trailer, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
If, if I may capitalize on a couple of points that Taylor made there. The way that that, that facility is laid out now, as he talked about, was one of the reasons why we talked about maybe merging the two together, even though it's going to be a little more costly to do, but it did allow a citizen to come in, drive directly through and get everything in one place. Instead of having to get back in the car, drive around the facility, then dump one bag of trash and then go back out and drive and come back around. And now so it, it seemed like for right now that, that, you know, we, we had that ability to do that. We can certainly utilize that other area and we certainly have the equipment to be able to do the, the hauling. If we get to a point, holidays or something along those lines where we need to, you know, go ahead and do that transport ourselves. You know, we still get the hosting, but you know, so that was something to consider. The other point I wanted to make was that, you know, as you all know, we, we tried this before with the school system and, and putting out the trailers and stuff. And they ended up becoming dumping grounds rather than, you know, recyclables. And then they, we had to have staff to go through each trailer physically and throw out the discarded contaminants, you know, and stuff. And obviously, as you know, when you get one contaminant in there, they charge you for the whole load being contaminated. So that's an educational program that we need to work on. Uh, if we get something, the, the system set up, I think it, it, it would really be a good project for us to work with the school system and, and some of these areas and, and, and maybe getting something like that. You know, better under control. Cause you know, the schools, they're going to just dump it into one container. And you know, even though they're asking for plastics to be here and there, they're all contaminated when they're dumped. So, uh, you know, it may be something that we can look at and investigate further.
I think, I mean, to a point like five years down the road, or however long it takes, if we see that it at a minimum gets to a break even, because we were on the recyclable program where we've been before, it was, it was costing us. It's on our expense side of the book. So if we get to the point where it minimum breaks even, you know, if it's an investment of 200 grand, I mean, we essentially could potentially build another one down at 400.
That's correct.
And then. And continue that part of the way.
So we got a location for it.
Well, as you know, we had the, the, at station two there, that little middle pad up on the top of the hill there. At one time that was discussed about putting one there.
Which is a SPOSS project, Fuel Center and the Recycle Center.
Yep.
I think this would be, I, I do like the way that it is separated out and I think the residents would enjoy seeing where it goes. I mean, and that's one of the complaints that I've had is they don't know where it, where it goes to when they put it in the, in the bin. And especially when it's all mixed together. And I think this would kind of streamline it and they could, they could see better how it would be distributed. And this has been a plastic, this is.
And the good thing about this is that all your weighted, and what I mean by weighted is your scaled product. In other words, you're going over, you've got a ton of debris that you want to get rid of. It's all over on one side.
Yeah.
And you're dealing on that one side. You're not dealing with residential folks that are coming in and dumping it, looking to dump a bag of trash or two bags of trash or whatever. Uh, that's all separated over here with the recyclables. And this is over here for commercial and, and, and scrap metal and, and those type of distributions. So it, it, it does offer benefit. Might be a little costly at this point, but.
Yeah. And it will help, you know, I know y'all have a lot of traffic, especially on the weekends and stuff. And this would help kind of.
Separate.
Separate it because it's taken, if you've got two bags of trash and you've got somebody backed up with a pickup load of stuff, they're having to unload. You know, like you say, it would streamline that and get people in and out a little bit quicker and. But yeah, I think it's something we need to, need to work, work towards and, uh, you know, we need to have more discussions too on their actual transfer station and figure out what we need to do with it to, um, to be able to accept what we want to with it. So.
And I think the repairs that we've, uh, we've talked about for the 35,000, that's I said, it's replacing the, the horizontal support structures between the, the vertical supports. Uh, if you go out there, you may call through the other PowerPoint where they were twisted and bent and, you know, ripped apart, that kind of thing. Those would all be replaced.
Fixing the tin and everything on the.
Fixing the tin on the side and, and putting in the, a heavier duty plate, you know, in the bottom. So.
I think we. No pun intended, but I hate to throw good money away when we just spent a ton of money on that building, that the waste station. You know, we built that new nice building there and to not utilize that. Absolutely. It's a little wasteful if we don't figure out a way to make it very efficient and continue to use that for the other type of.
Yeah.
Great point.
Yeah. And I think this would help us to kind of, to maybe, to do that and figure out what we need to do to, to take higher volumes of trash. Um, because it's, I mean, you'll have residents that, that would want to dump, that may have a dump trailer or something that they've cleaned out their basement or something. And you know, that would be tough for us to take right now, but I would like to see where we could be able to, to accommodate that as well in the future. But I know it's very costly to, to fix that and, um, this would at least get us to kind of, get our recyclables fixed and we could be working towards the rest of it.
Other questions for Dave?
I just like, you know, we talked, then we talked about the dump cost. But I mean, we're looking, our overhead though, as far as personnel, trucks, the trailers, we've already had replaced the truck. We've had replaced.
Trailers.
Two trailers or.
Really the trailers need replacing now.
And again, they're already need replacing. Total cost of the thing, if somebody else is doing it. And we're actually could possibly get money back on recycle, because I think at one time we were close to a hundred thousand dollars to negative on taking recycling. So maybe this time we get, we get a break even or making money on it.
Certainly better program than what we.
But the overhead, you know, we got to weigh the overhead of the cost of a tractor trailer to the tractor and then the two trailers. Cause if you take one out, you got to have one there or you shut down.
Fuel, drive.
Fuel.
And, and we can look at that because we have basically a driver that's assigned to the transfer station back to.
You got, you got all those.
Put a, put them out there.
Yeah.
You know, with the citizens and collecting the money and doing that. So certainly some other kinks that we need to work out. But I think it's playing going forward.
Just thank y'all for, I'll say this, uh, I know we've been looking at this thing for a while and we knew it was going to cost us money if we were going to get it fixed. But it was unsafe and, uh, I think the recycle, like you said, everybody's heard something about, or people's got phone calls about recycling. And maybe we can look at that place on the east side if it starts making money.
Definitely. I mean, I don't have a question, just a comment going over to the Pickens County site. And I think Commissioner Fawcett went as well. Uh, very impressive.
Yes.
Very impressive what they have and what they do. Uh, and just to, like I said, you know, they, they really went all in, spent millions of dollars to make it work. And got like this $500,000 compact thing that compacts it all together.
Yes.
Very impressive. And so, um, I think this is a good step for us, a good step forward, a good step for our citizens. We have lots of citizens who want to recycle. And I think we kind of have a good idea of what's happening now in this single stream. It's all junk. It is flat, don't work. And so we probably wind up with, I'm going to guess nine out of 10 containers that are contaminated versus uncontaminated. So this is a good start and $250,000 to do both, to kind of get both of them going. We're still using the one facility. If somebody wants to bring, like you said, their mattresses and all that stuff, dump it off in there. This gives them a chance to recycle as well. And then you throw this, they got one or two bags of trash and put it in the compactor. I think it's a great idea. And gives our citizens what they're really looking for, what they're wanting us to do. Good job, Dave. Good job, Jeff, and all the things y'all putting together. Appreciate you coming and being with us as well and explaining. Any other questions?
You mentioned, um, you guys do the marketing of it. I think that was in the proposal. Can you, because I think that's the key component for this whole thing. We can spend, we can have Taj Mahal that you can come throw your garbage in and put into, you know what it is.
Yeah. So when it comes to the, the true marketing of it, you know, it's going to take the, the newspaper, you know, the commissioners to really be talking about it and, um, and everything. But when it comes to like the signage and the education.
And, um, and everything, but when it comes to like the signage and the education part of it, you know, we will definitely provide that stuff. It will help out with it. Um, you know, I told Dave, last meeting we had was, you know, he was telling me about the school one, he goes, well, you know, I'm open to going and, and spending a half a day and just making it fun for everybody, you know? Um, so if any businesses or anybody needs an education, you know, I'm available to go and help them walk them through it, you know, see what, what and all they've got.
Gotcha.
So, but when it comes to the actual like signage and everything, we'll take care of that. But then, you know, really getting the community on board is going to take, you know, you guys and anybody that has any influence. So.
Thank you. I think the, the great thing about it after going and looking at it is you get the buy-in once people see it works.
Yes.
And I think you will see businesses that will buy into the concept with their employees. Maybe they like say have water bottles or whatever it is they're doing. They'll save those, put them in there. I mean, I, I think the buy-in will come as soon as they see it works, because that's the key to everything. If it works, people will do it. And so, and it works in Pickens County and they've got a a grand operation over there going, it's, you know, with what they do. So.
And, and even with that, you know, say five years down the line, you know, the volume is there. Um, you know, my company is open to helping make the Pickens County over here. Um, you know, and it could be something that we provide the compactor, you know, you provide the land, you know, kind of go in together.
Yeah.
But ultimately that is the goal, because if I can keep it in the county, it's going to be even more money for, for, for the county. That is the, the big picture of it.
I think spending eight million dollars. Like I said, in my, get the helicopter.
Not yet anyway. We gotta do the radio first. Alright, thanks, Dave.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Now we'll move into new business. First up, we have presentation request to increase pay per call for volunteer firefighters, murder search director Danny Thompson. Danny?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Thank you for allowing me to come for you, um, to ask for this increase for county volunteers. So a little background information, Dawson County has long been served by volunteer firefighters in this county. Many of our current fire stations were built by the hard labor of some of those volunteer firefighters some forty and fifty years ago, and we still operate some of those firehouses today. In twenty fifteen, Dawson County transitioned to a paid per call system. This was a result of complying with some of the Affordable Care Act that had come out at that time. A currently, uh, a new volunteer firefighter, when he or she comes on board, they receive twelve dollars and eighty-three cents per call. That's not an hourly, that is a per call. So if they're there for five minutes or they're there for five hours, they receive twelve eighty-three. What we're asking the board to approve is to move the paid per call to sixteen dollars. Uh, for all existing volunteers, they will move to the new minimum. Or if they're already over that minimum, because they have been here for a while and received either promotions through the rank system, um, or additional longevity increases back, um, before twenty fifteen, they will receive a three dollar increase. Uh, our volunteers haven't seen an increase since the best that I can find, and Mr. Chairman may be able to shed a little light, and maybe even Commissioner Satterfield. I found one document on fifteen, one document in twenty seventeen. I'm thinking it's probably aligning back when it transitioned to the paid per call to come in compliance with the Affordable Care Act. That's the last I could find that they received any increase. Um, we're not asking for any additional funding in our current budget. We feel that based on the trends, um, of three, three years worth of trends, the budgeted amount of money that's in there, what we've spent so far this year for our volunteers. Um, I think we'll be good. We'll finish in the black, uh, this year, uh, with that line item and really don't need any increase, just moving the pay per call up. Um, and we would like to see if we could go ahead and move this forward to the voting session and make it retro to July one. So little background on that, we pay our volunteers at the end of the month. So they submit their call sheets into fire headquarters. We capture those and then at the end of the month, we tally it up. So if, um, firefighter Gaines has run four calls, we, we take your pay per call times four. We align it with the pay sheets that they're required to submit for documentation. And then they get a check that's direct deposited that first pay period, August. So that's kind of where we're at. And that would allow us just to make July completely whole. If the board would, uh, approve that, and like I said, would like to see it move forward this evening since, um, just, well, I guess we do have another commission meeting then.
Yeah.
So.
How many volunteers do we have, chief?
Um.
You guys didn't lose any recently.
Nineteen.
Yes.
Yeah.
Nineteen, correct.
What are we annually spending at the current, uh, rate that we have?
So I'll give you the last few years trends. I'll start with twenty nineteen. We spent nine thousand three hundred sixty-two dollars. Twenty twenty, we spent five thousand one hundred and eighty-eight dollars. Twenty-one, we spent four thousand four hundred and five dollars. And there's some variables there that we have to consider. It's very difficult.
Number.
Uh, exactly. You know, how many calls? And when you look at some of that, you know, we backed off volunteers going to medical calls when we had COVID, because we couldn't supply them with gloves and masks and everything to carry in their POV. So, you know, we had some internal policies that kind of backed off some of the calls that they went to. Um, and so it's somewhat call volume driven. And call volume is going up. Um, that's, that's obvious. But, uh, you know, it is a little bit of a moving target to adjust. This will give us some good data as we move forward. I feel comfortable that as we begin our budget season and in August and moving forward, we're still going to be probably good, um, without having to see any line item increases in this one. So obviously next year when we advertise for volunteers, if, if I bring on ten additional volunteers, that may be something that I have to look at, because now we have more people going to scenes and, and everything. So.
Did you say that? The ninety-three sixty-two was which year?
Nineteen.
That's nineteen. So it's trending down.
Yes.
Yes, sir.
So.
Okay.
That's undo that. And I'm sure decreasing the number of volunteers has played a role in that as well.
It, it, Mr. Chairman, you're correct. So I will tell you, as the chief of the organization, my tool for having volunteers is to be able to recruit some of these younger people in. Get them some training. And then turn them to a full-time boy. We've got that vested interest. So, and we've done that. We've seen some of that success in this model out there, um, of being able to take somebody that went from the street to firefighter E M T. And that should always be our goal, because it's a great recruitment tool. You're getting people who live in our community to take ownership in the community. And it, it's, you know, for return on investment, it's great, because we're the ones training them. So why let them go somewhere else full-time down the road? So staffing levels vary, um, as far as the volunteers, you know, when it.
It's amazing to me is that we have people in our community that are willing to do this and serve their fellow citizens for that amount of money.
Twelve dollars, twenty-three.
I mean, I mean, it's, um.
Well, it's not for the money.
Right. That's my next statement is, is there's a passion for serving others. For service. We greatly appreciate those folks. So to me, it's a no-brainer. I mean, it's, I'm just running some numbers, twenty-five percent increase. And if you would have had it in place last year, would have increased us eleven hundred bucks. So I mean, that, that is, um, that's a given.
Appreciable.
And again, I'm such a proponent of volunteers. You know, we, we got so many boards and so many, I'm telling you, volunteers make the world go round. And, and I appreciate them so much. And it, it has, it has nothing to do with money. You know, they're just, they're just good people and they do want to serve others. So, I mean, I, I love volunteers.
We do too.
Yes.
Very appreciative of.
Do, do they have the equipment that they need when they go out on these calls?
Yes, ma'am. So each volunteer that comes through the system, uh, we, it, it, there's no price difference. If you're a full-time employee or you're a volunteer.
Okay.
The gear costs the same amount. It's, you know, twenty-two hundred dollars.
Have it. Do they?
Yes.
It is a, okay.
Yes, ma'am.
They have to have the same training.
Same level of training.
Wow.
They have to have the same number of hours that I have to have. So on top of everything else, they have to meet those same requirements.
They have carried us a long, long way.
Yes.
You go back to many, many years ago before, and I think in oh five, when we first started paying people to be firefighters. We had nothing but volunteers, as you well know, stationed over next to your house. We had probably at that time, we were a hundred and fifty strong.
Volunteer.
Straight up volunteers.
And we had like six or nine we paid.
Yeah. We didn't even have that many. Probably didn't have two or three. We actually paid the chief and maybe one more. Start with, for a while, we only had the chief and one more. Yeah. Volunteers have carried, uh, the fire department for years and years and years and oh, and in two thousand and five, when a lot of things changed, um, and the job itself changed, uh, became a lot more dangerous. And other people that were volunteering at that time had other commitments, obviously, that they had to take care of to feed their family. And things began to change. And that's what led us to the paid staff that we have today. And as we've moved on, like I said, from a hundred and fifty down to nineteen, uh, true, truly great volunteers that are still with us after all these years. Um, it, it's, it has really come a long ways. And so, um, appreciate y'all's, what y'all do, the willingness to still be a volunteer is awesome. Um, and yeah, I mean, I think this is, this is chicken feet.
I don't, don't, don't judge our appreciation by the pay.
Yeah.
That's.
Appreciate it all. And for years they did it for nothing.
Hmm.
They were truly not getting paid at all. And then basically we just started that when we did it, so that they wouldn't be spending their own gas money to come help us for nothing anyway. We want to at least give them gas money back. And that was basically the concept of it.
They won't pay for that now.
They won't pay for that now. But, uh, we were trying to pay, uh, gas at that particular time to, so when they did come out and help us, that was great. So y'all good with moving it forward?
Yes.
Alright. Thank you, chief.
Thank you. Oh, I did want to let the board know that, uh, we did receive our two med units. So they are in the county.
Oh, good.
Um, and they are being outfitted down at fire station seven. Public affairs officer will be getting some information out, but they are super sharp units. So thank you to.
When you get them inspected.
Monday.
Monday.
There's inspected them on Monday.
You get them done, bring us one to see.
I'll be ready for you.
I'll get his call.
Let you sit. That's right.
I don't want to see it that way. I just want to see it out in the parking lot.
That's right.
Yeah, between the, in between the meetings, we'll look at it in the parking lot. Bring it up and we'll look at it in the parking lot. I want to see it the other way. I wrote it in enough.
Yeah.
I don't want to, I don't want to see it the other way. Alright, next up, we have discussion of a review and update to zoning ordinance and review and update to the impact fee study. Ms. Davis, you going to talk about that?
Um, I actually believe this might be of Commissioner Gaines and Ms. Farrell. I, I mean, I have some involvement. I'm happy to.
You, you wrote this. I don't, I don't mind starting and kind of setting the stage where we're at.
I'm happy to jump in. Sorry, I drug you then.
Obviously, we've seen, um, we've all witnessed some concerns with what's happening in the economy at the national level. And those things are outside of our control with inflation and, uh, the transverse of that, which we anticipate could potentially be upon us, which is, is a recessionary period. And so as we, as a county government, um, are in charge of providing services to citizens, um, one of the things that we lean on, which we're talking about, that Chairman Thurman was talking about a minute ago, is, is how much we lean on sales tax revenue and how we see that we utilize that drastically to continue to help pay for the services that we have to deliver. And as was represented in the study we did, uh, I guess about a year ago from Georgia Tech, the fact that every residential house that gets online, uh, is a cost for us. And we have managed that, uh, in a way that we've been balancing between the, um, private property rights of those individuals that own the property that are selling it, as well as those that, um, are neighbors to them. And so we've tried as a board to, to manage that as best we can with a strong revenue that is, uh, we've been leaning on, um, for many years, which is sales tax revenue. However, with the change in landscape of national government and what we're seeing with inflation in our economy and the uncertainty that's upon us, um, we feel like it would be, um, responsible of us to make sure that we can continue to deliver high-level services uh, with the uncertainty of what our revenue is going to look like moving forward. Um, it would be pertinent for us to kind of pa- hit pause on the additional new construction of residential developments in Dawson County until we get some, uh, we have the ability to look at, um, impact fees. I think, um, Commissioner Dooley was, uh, talking about that recently is, you know, we haven't looked at, um, we implement, re-implemented impact fees about five years ago, I believe it was.
Two thousand eighteen.
Two thousand eighteen. And so an example tonight is the, the park and rec and what they're able to do with, uh, the fees have been collected there. Um, and that all goes back to, you know, what it cost us to deliver, uh, services to the citizens. So in order for us to hit pause and kind of regroup and look at what expenses are going to be looking like here in the next future, next, um, twelve, eighteen, twenty-four months, as well as, um, you know, whatever revenue looks like and the uncertainty that's out there. Um, I think it's pertinent that we pause by implementing a short-term moratorium uh, on residential development, um, that gives planning and zoning and Cheryl's team the ability to, uh, bring before us some, what?
Sharon.
That's what I said. What'd I say?
Cheryl.
Cheryl, Sharon, Farrell, Sharon, Farrell. I just put them together.
That's Cheryl. That's, okay.
But it would give her some time to, to kind of take a breath and look at options and tools in the toolbox, uh, in order for us to tighten up some zoning options as well as us to, uh, take a look at impact fees and making sure that the data that we've been relying on over the last five years is still pertinent today as we move forward uh, in the next couple of decades and what changes we're seeing in the community. Um, and so I engaged with, um, uh, or several of us engaged with, uh, legal to come up with some options and to make sure, because we all know that we can't just stop growth. We can't just say no to everything just because it is what it is. But what we can do is, is posit legally within the bounds that we have. And so legal has put together and distributed a, a resolution for us to consider, um, implementing a, uh, what's called an emergency moratorium, which gives us the ability to kind of put pause. And then we would go into, I think we needed to extend it from a time perspective, then we'd go into some public hearings in order to legally be able to extend that beyond the scope of what this, um.
Sixty days.
Uh, what this one is presenting. This one is presenting actually thirty days, I believe. Is that to August?
That's correct. Yes. So since we would, if we proceed to move this forward to the voting session adopted tonight, then given that there's no notice opportunity for a public hearing, we would have this in place for thirty days. Um, actually, it's twenty-nine. At the August fifth meeting is when we would then have a public hearing that would be advertised and give people opportunity to comment before considering extension. That will also give staff and all of us time within that thirty days to maybe fine tune exactly what we hope to accomplish, you know, and, and proceed with what we started in this first thirty days.
So yeah, and I, I'd ask her, and I don't know if we want to read that into the, we, we read it on the record, or if anybody wants to have questions about it though.
Board wants to move it forward and take it up for a vote, we'll read it then into the record.
We can certainly do that. We could also put some copies of it out at this sign-in or the welcome table, if you'd like to do that, and then summarize it.
We've always read them into the.
Okay. And that's fine. It's not terribly long.
It's not long.
Yeah. I just believe it's something we need to take a look at. And like Chris said, we can't just cut the growth off, but we need to look at it, make sure we're doing it the best that we can. We have the best, um, outlook for the future. None of us can predict the future, but we need to be able to try to plan to the best of our ability. And this will give us a little breathing room to do that and to adjust our zoning regs and our impact fees. Um, to make sure we're able to fund our future growth and, um, without placing a larger tax burden on our community. So I, I believe it's, uh, something we definitely need to look into.
Anyone else? Alright, y'all good moving it forward?
Yes, I am.
Okay. Alright, county manager report, Dave.
Thank you, Chairman, Commissioners. Uh, just a short report for you. Dawson County Family Connections, uh, has been awarded eight thousand dollars and court, uh,
in court, uh, funds to support local kinship caregivers. Thanks to the, uh, Georgia Division of Family and Children's Services, this award will allow Dawson County Family Connection to better serve the Dawson County families who are raising children who are not biologically their own with improved support, uh, meetings and emergency funds for basic needs. That was my report.
Questions at the county manager? County attorney report.
Um, I do not have a public report. Thank you.
Thank you. No need for, uh, executive session or anything later.
Commissioner Satterfield shaking his head. So I believe he was hoping to have an executive session.
Reference. Personnel. Okay. All right. All righty then, that is all we have on the work session for today. We'll take about a ten-minute break. And then we'll be back for the voting sessions. Thank you for your attendance.